Good evening and welcome to the November 1st City of New Franklin, sorry, pardon my language, Council meeting. We have one, two, three, four first readings, five first readings. And the first resolution is number 23R84, and we go to Mr. Pats.
Thank you. We will open a Finance Committee meeting at 6 o'clock. And we have 22, 23R84, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Delta Dental of Ohio for a dental insurance plan and declaring an emergency. And we'll just combine this with Resolution 23R85, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreements with Cornerstone Benefit Services and Medical Mutual for New Franklin's health insurance plan and declaring an emergency. These are both plans that we had last year, and I think people are pretty satisfied with them. The dental plan, we're seeing an increase of about 8%, which is surprisingly good, I think.
I think so.
And then the medical plan, through Medical Mutual and Cornerstone, is a 19% increase. And again, based on everything, I think that's a pretty reasonable type thing.
It seems in line with what I have, I have a very similar sized group at my business, and we also have MMO, and they started out with 30%, and then we negotiated it down to 20. So the city did one point better than us, and I think that's, the people I've talked to, it's pretty common.
Yeah.
Which is really sad that we're still seeing 20% increases, but.
And I believe the plans are similar to, no major changes in the plans.
No, no changes at all this year.
Okay.
There was a slight change last year to incentive for mail order, okay, a double copay, but no, the plan is the same.
Okay.
No changes to that.
Mr. Mayor, any comments?
Yeah, just two things I'd say. We appreciate the input from the private sector, because it was consistent with others.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly. And the Healthcare Committee met, and we had representatives from all the department heads and all the unions, and the Healthcare Committee unanimously recommended these renewals. And I will tell you that during the discussion, we had a healthy conversation about things we might be able to do in the future, deductible, raising deductibles, and the copays, and possibly espousal exclusion with some alternatives. And they are very much open to having those discussions. And the intention is that we're going to gather again, and in the spring, rather than wait, we can't get the renewal information, as you know, until late in the year, but we're going to get that committee together, I'll keep council informed, invite you to join us, and we're going to start those discussions to see what we might want to propose to the providers, that we might be willing to do, and where would this take us. So it's a, I think a really responsible and a proactive approach from the, from our rank and file.
I think that's an excellent point, that we do have people involved, that it's not just one or two people making these decisions for all the city employees, but you have representatives of those employees that are involved in the process, involved in decision making, involved in starting to look forward to next year, what can we do, not only for themselves, but also to help the city. So I think that's just fantastic that we have that here. Crystal, did you have anything else you want to share?
No, but that's pretty much it. I mean, and because there are other, you know, we were able to get a no shop offer, basically, to have this renewal move to 19%. You know, when we initially took over Medical Mutual last year, there was a much different culture, because I think you come up with a self-funded plan with reference-based pricing, it was problematic. So I think all in all, that's very positive, and you have a very robust network, and the plan design, I think, like I said, everybody's very happy with that, the feedback that I received, so.
I haven't heard of any problems this year already.
No, the same with Delta Dental, it's a very robust network for your demographic. For, you know, we did a deep survey on that, initially, when we were looking at a different carrier for that as well, so.
Questions, comments? Comfortable waving three on these two? I think so.
Yeah.
All right, super. And then we have Resolution 23R87, Mr. Daniels.
Okay, Kristen. Resolution 23R87, a resolution approving and adopting the 2024 annual operating appropriation budget for the general fund and all other funds for the City of New Franklin and declaring this emergency. This is the results of our budget meetings, and Susan, if you want to add a little commentary?
Well, I, as I told, as I spoke to the Finance Committee Chairman earlier before this, there's only one change that I made, remember, I told you I was going to go back and look at the numbers? Well, there only is one change I made. Now, it comes up to, like, it looks big in the dollar situation, but it's just for our pass-through funds on that Cleveland Maslow project, because I wanted to make sure that I got that in there, so that we can, because I don't know how much will get paid this year, and how much will pass through next year. So I put it at the level where of the resolution that you had already done for this year, which is the $551,880.60. So that's all that I've added to the budget, from what you've seen from the spreadsheets that you all have. So that, if you do the math, you'll see that it just is that one item. Everything else seems to be good, and our insurance renewal is 19%, and we had budgeted at 20, so that was nice. So pretty much everything should be in line, and we should be ready to roll 2024.
Any other questions?
I had to do. Now, with these, approving the appropriations to budget for 2024, going that before the end of the year, does that allow the department heads to move forward with their projects for the year, whether they're buying new equipment, or anything like that, new days still have to come through us?
Well, it's not a point of coming through us. This budget does not become effective until January 1st of 2024.
Correct, correct.
So the appropriations, this amount of appropriations is not available to them until?
Right. I'm asking after January 1st, are they able then to?
Yes.
Let's go.
They are, they are legal now for delivery in March, April, or May, or July?
Yes, sometimes they don't have paperwork that has a 2023 date on it.
Right.
Yes. And, and there are some things, for example, with the police, they have their leads online that they use, and they do it by credit card as soon as we roll over to January. So yes, they are up and running as soon as January hits. They may not have, they may not have all their purchase orders and super blind gets written yet, because we have to wait until we clear out the old stuff.
Correct.
But yes, they know they can go right ahead as soon as we step over. They have a small window in December, part of December, where they have to get all their bills in, and get everything done, and turned in, and no more purchases until we hit January 1st. But once that date comes, they're, they're ready to go.
It'll still require resolutions for $10,000 or more.
Oh, they still will. Didn't we talk before about being able to set something up so that they wouldn't necessarily have to do that? Because it's already been approved in the, in the budget, they, so they, you know, you've already been approved for this much, for this purpose?
I've got that on my desk, I looked at that, Mr. Powell shared that with me, I don't know if it's right on point, but let me look at that, and if it's something that's that makes sense, I can present it, and we can get that in place before the first of the year.
Okay. Yeah, I think that'd be, you know, a good thing.
Yeah, because we've got a number of things, you're right.
Yeah.
I keep what they're, yeah, I don't mean to. But no, we do have a number of things, buying some trucks, you know, we, we know, you guys maybe know what we're buying.
Yeah, right.
Okay, yeah, so, and again, I know we talked about it in the last meeting, I just think it's fantastic that we were able to have council representatives at the meetings, the budget meetings with all the department heads, I, you know, thank you, and Mr. Daniels, and Mr. Powell for doing that, and also that we're getting this done before the end of the year, which I think is fantastic.
Second, second year of, the process went very well, as I said before. Being the budget, do we want to have time, since we don't have to pass this now?
I would suggest we take time, since Mr. Powell's talking, in case he has any questions.
I agree.
Yeah, I would suggest that as well, because if anybody wants to take a second look at it, or ask some further questions, we're not in the hurry, as long as we get it done, by before the end of the year, we're in good shape.
Yeah, somebody in the public doesn't understand the $500,000 pass-through you just mentioned, which we understand, but some people may not. That's what the Congress gives people, the opportunity to come in and ask questions.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will close Finance Committee meeting at 6:10.
Our next resolution is Resolution Number 23R86, Mr. Webb.
It's 6:10, and we will open up the Law and Ordinances Committee. We have Resolution Number 23R86, a resolution amending the City of New Franklin tow-in policy and declaring an emergency. And I see we've had a few provisions, and we actually updated the addendum with the current tow-in services and fees, so I'd like to open it up for conversation or questions.
This was presented to us by the police. We are way, way, way below scale, and hadn't, hadn't increased the prices since 2009, so we've managed 15 years with, yeah.
Is there a problem?
Yeah, exactly. So there was, they did a survey that police did, as far as what neighboring communities are charging, and this is consistent with that. We don't have an exclusive tow contract, but the company that's been working with us is, has done a wonderful job, and the police are very pleased with them. So this is just, this is to bring us up to roughly the scale. And, you know, as I thought about it, I kind of like that we're going just to 2023 numbers, because then maybe we can get up to 2038 before we raise it again. And there's a couple benefits built in for residents that are somewhat more favorable to, for instance, this able motorist, we understand that, you know, resident would be $60, non-resident $75. And then we also have the, when they tow these, and they're, and nobody claims them, there's a couple options that can take place with the title. The title can go to the tow yard in lieu of any cost, or the city can decide to pay the tow charges and take the title, if it somehow happens to be a vehicle that has some value. The fact that, the provision that permits the tow company to keep the vehicle and dispose of it if they choose, and we're not going to do this randomly according to police, it would have to be a special kind of vehicle. But because of that, then, the policy provides that the tow company will provide free tow services for all of our city vehicles. So that's an additional benefit, that's all included in the.
Is that new, or is that something?
No, that's, that's a rollover. That, we had that before, but we, the language is a little bit still, and once we have the section numbers right, they can finish the cuts.
It's just more, excuse me, I heard of you, oh, it's catching salary. It's a little bit more than just towing. I thought it was a pretty good deal for us.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I liked the plan, but it was already in, loosely typed it up and added it in.
Any other questions or comments? Would we be all right, what do you mean, the second and third reading? Then we'll move on, we have ordinance Number 23O02, an ordinance to revise the New Franklin municipal income tax ordinance and declaring an emergency. Have to open it up for conversation and questions?
You might recall, I mentioned a while back, we had received notice when House Bill 33 passed, there were some specific provisions added to the Ohio Revised Code relative to taxes. It has a lot of it primarily to remote work locations. And we did not have the option to consider these as to whether or not we wanted to adopt them. And so it was a little bit tricky, but eventually we got the language in there. The tax code itself is, I think about, I can't remember, 40, 50, 60.
I'm curious, what was the context for this?
It was, yeah, in fact, I believe, Mr. Daniels, I'm worse than that. I actually started to go through it.
Yeah, this is too much.
All right. But we trust Rita, their eyes are on it, and we're comfortable with it.
So I think they would have some liability, probably, if we didn't do it right, so that incentive is correct, and what we did.
Yeah, which is unsure why they want to see the finished product before the first.
Any other comments or questions?
Just in case anybody has any concern, this does not change the tax rate at all, so it doesn't, it doesn't affect your money.
Yeah, I did get, receive one call with that question, and I said, no, that's not what it's about, this is bringing us up to speed with the actual House Bill 55. So there is one, there's a little bit of good stuff in there about penalties, that, you know, they're, they're kind of limiting some of the penalties, but other than that, it doesn't really change anything. What type of penalties? For like, like filings and things of that nature? It's maxing it out, instead of, instead of they, some places, you know, depending on their code, it can be quite a bit, and now they've limited it to 25, and then the first time that you get it, that has to be waived, and that kind of thing, so.
It's 25 per filing?
Yes.
Not 25 per week, or 25 per month?
Right.
If you miss a filing, it's $25.
Yes.
Pretty impressive. I would say a lot of people complain about Rita, so I think it's got, it got some people that, you know.
Any other comments?
Since this is a housekeeping matter and has to be implemented, I would say that ordinance, if we remember, we should waive the second and third readings. 6:19, and we are closing the Law and Ordinances Committee.
Thank you. I'd like to call the orders.
Oh, yeah, supplemental.
Oh, I didn't get that.
Where did you get that?
No.
I didn't bring it up, I saw it.
Okay, can you get it? Did you send it to me?
He sent it to me, and I thought, here it was.
We need development committee here.
Okay, me too.
Mr. Wolf is.
Oh, that's sweet, thank you.
Very prepared. Look at that.
Resolution Number 23R88, Mr. Daniels.
All right, I should have, I should have brought it.
Yeah, because it sure is.
Yeah. 23R88, a resolution confirming the agreements with GPD Group and the Ohioan Area Canalway Association for the Tow Path Feasibility Study. So go ahead, this is a study.
Yeah, this is the situation, we had, we became aware in late of August of 2021, of the availability of a $15,000 grant from the Ohioan Area Canalway. There's been a plan on the books since, I think, 2017 or 2014, to eventually see if they could connect the trails from Nimasilla all the way here to the state park, and then out to the Ohioan Area Canalway. And so that's been on the books, they tried to revise that, they made this $15,000 grant available. It is a, it requires a match of $15,000, and the funds would be used to do a feasibility study, as to if you're going to do a trail, where would it, where would it be, what would the approximate cost be? And so in a pretty, actually, well, GPD's number came in, $31,500 to do this work, to put that, that survey together. So I signed the agreements, and they did the first phase, which was to consider options, and they came up with three options. One of them, straight up Vanderhoof, two of them taking a circuitous route, and from there, I, I held it, because we had the comprehensive plan moving along with it. So I thought, well, let's get some input from citizens, and so I sort of put this back burner, and the Erie Canalway would check in with me from time to time, I'd say, well, we're doing the comp plan, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, and so every month, I'd tell them the same thing. So now the comp plan's all ready to go, I said, I better pull this up, take a look at. So I found two things. The first thing I found out was that I was past the timeline from the Erie Canalway, because it was supposed to be done by 2022. And I said, well, that's not good. Now, we had spent, I put it in the, in the resolution, $7,600 so far with GPD, which by itself, we got that, we got the value of that, they've given us some, you know, the next stages would be to put a project team together of stakeholders, interested parties, and then dial down on one of those three to say, okay, now, we're going to do a cost estimate, a study on that, which doesn't commit us to anything, it's just, the paper's there, and if it turns out something the city wants to do, then our designs are all done, we're in good shape to go out for grantly. So, so we've sketched that much, I look at this, and I say, oh, we're past the deadline with, but they've been talking to me every month. And then the second thing I realized when I looked at this, is I did not have a reservation from council for this. And well, that's not bad. So I went down and talked to George Eby from the Ohioan Area Canalway, he was very understanding and very responsive, he said, when we give these grants, they don't want to take it back off the books, we want these kind of things to happen, they're trying to do it all across the 100 miles that this trail goes. And so they, they gave me a timeline, they said, how much time would you need? I said, well, you know, I told him I got to back, come back to council, but that we could have this together by the end of the first quarter, March 31st. We would have, GPD would have to finish the feasibility study by that time. And then, this is a reimbursement grant, so once we pay the balance of it, then they're going to give us a 15, so we'll get all of it for about $15,000. So I met with GPD as well, we updated exactly where we were, we checked where all their billings are. On the upside, we got 2021 numbers from GPD that they're still locked in on, so there's that benefit. So this is more the house painting, you know, I dropped the ball and I'm bringing it to you, and I should have, and so here it is, but I still think it's a good thing for the city. I think we got, you know, we got, well, there's no risk involved, it gives us, it'll give us a plan, if in fact there's a desire to try to pursue it. So when this got talked about in the past, there was a lot of dust-up, you know, it's a controversial issue, anytime you're talking trails, it's going to involve somebody's property, it's going to theoretically, either their property, in front of their property, across the street from their property, you know, possibly in the backyard. It's, it's a contentious issue, and what I ask going forward is that this really be an open dialogue with the public, that, because interestingly, I was, I was quite surprised, this was brought up on the survey, and the results from the survey were surprisingly positive for the connecting trail, whereas prior to the survey, I had not heard anything but negatives. So, you know, I think, I think it's going to behoove us to reach into the community to get both sides, because the people that are against it will probably come to a lot of meetings, and if the people that are for it don't come to the meetings, you know, who are we representing if we don't get them as well? So that's my only request on this, but I think this study is live.
That's how usually works, you know, Jim, people are for it, won't be here, and people are against it, so that's when we got to hopefully get out to people and make some communication.
That's exactly right. And I've talked to some of those people early on, when we first started discussing this publicly, and met with a fellow over on Vanderhoof, and listed their concerns, so I think those are the people we need to gather in, to be a part of the, the process.
I think the important part of this, as the mayor said, is this is just a study. We're not committed to anything, this, this doesn't tell us to move forward on any timeline at all, it's just, if at some point, that we might think this is something that we might find some money for to do, you know, we have a plan, we have, we have something to, you know, work off of, as opposed to just a doc.
Yeah, when it comes to getting public money, having a plan already engineered is a huge step forward.
Sure.
That's fact. All right. Go ahead, go ahead.
It's definitely using Vanderhoof through, I will regret, it's not.
No.
There are three options, I will be shy.
Yeah, I would be shy.
If the consensus isn't Vanderhoof, and then whether or not you want to go forward with it, I don't know. The two other alternatives, one was to go through, it was sort of a strange route, it would have involved the Dominion, or the Ohioan.
Ohioan, yeah.
And the other, because I asked them, you know, their first, the first thing they gave me was Vanderhoof. I said, well, okay, so we've got some people on Vanderhoof who aren't crazy about that, can you come up with something else? So that's, you know, they didn't present all three, and the other one would be, would actually go through some private property, which I can't imagine, I will say publicly, there's no way I would support something like that, okay? The good news about the Vanderhoof plan initially, I mean, where we're talking about taking property to put that trail, just, I guess I should be careful saying that, but I just don't anticipate ever supporting something like that. But it's possible, it could be as simple as a five-foot bike path on either side of Vanderhoof, kind of similar to what you see out on East Castor, coming from Maine. And it seems to be functional, I've seen people use that, and you'd be in road right away, there'd be no taking involved, and if the stars align, like we're hoping they do, the sewer coming up that way, which is where the design element would be helpful, you could conceivably save some money, and sort of dovetail with that in terms of their finished product. So Judy, that's a long answer to a short question, but I expect that's what we.
Because I remember Vanderhoof, and I remember the comments about that.
Yeah. I was surprised I asked about the Ohioan right away, because that just seemed really logical to me, you've already got this right away, it's clear, and, you know, somebody's already caring for parts of it. But then I found out that's all, that it's all private property. So it's private property with a right-of-way, just like if you have a gas line that runs down your property, it's your property, so you have to deal with each, you know, it was, what I thought was a logical answer turned out to be much more complicated than what it was.
I agree, so this would actually go through your home, if you had a right-of-way there?
If it went, if it went down.
Through your yard.
Yeah, that's why we're saying the most logical, when this comes out with the three options, the most logical will likely be later. It's going to be hard to get away from that, unless you're willing to take a piece of property.
And they will extend that for you, is my understanding.
Yes, yeah, we're good through March 31st, and I've talked to GPD, and that's sufficient time.
And the reason being, they already have it, the money's there, and they would like to give them.
Right, right.
Sounds good.
The reason. Any other questions, comments? Should we go ahead and wave the three?
I'm okay with that.
All right. I don't think I opened the community development meeting, but I'm going to close community development meeting at 6:29.
And I would like to call to order the City of New Franklin Wednesday, November 4th, 2023 meeting at 6:30. Everyone stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for its existence, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as one. Mr. Johnson, would you give the vote?
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Hargit?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Present.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of October 18th.
Second.
Do you have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any public comments? I'm sorry, I'm going in and out, guys. I was just there with you. Does anyone have any comments? Any questions?
It's been a while.
It has been a while. Our first reading resolution is Number 23R84, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Delta Dental of Ohio for a dental insurance plan and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, we move to waive the three readings on Resolution 23R84. Second?
We have a second, sorry. Tell me we have a first and a second.
Who is the second? Thank you. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 23R84.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Resolution Number, Resolution passes, sorry. Resolution Number 23R85.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreements with Cornerstone Benefit Services and Medical Mutual for New Franklin's health insurance plan and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, we move to waive the three readings on Resolution 23R85.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?[1799.82]
We move to waive the second and third reading.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly. Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number 23R86.
This resolution is brought to you by the Law and Ordinance Committee. We move to.
Mr. Webb?
Oh, sorry.
You told it to the Jones.
I'm sorry.
I did that too.
I apologize. I read the wrong rails on that.
Kelly, you watch it, it's go home. I'm sorry. Fumbling. I didn't say anything.
Sorry.
A resolution amending the city of New Franklin towing policy and declaring an emergency.
Now. This was assigned to the Law and Ordinance Committee, and we move to waive the second and third reading.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 23R86, second. We have a first and a second, Kelly. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number 23, this is an ordinance, I apologize, ordinance number 23O02.
An ordinance to revise the New Franklin municipal income tax ordinance and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance is assigned to the Law and Ordinance Committee. We move to waive the second and third reading.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
We move to adopt ordinance 23O02, second. We have a first and a second, Kelly. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Resolution number 23R87.
A resolution approving and adopting the 2024 annual operating appropriation budget for the general fund and all other funds for the city of New Franklin and declaring an emergency.
This was assigned to the Finance Committee, and we're going to ask for time on this resolution.
Time was asked, and time is granted, and we have a, this is my, resolution number 23R88.
A resolution confirming the agreements with GCD Group and the Ohio and Erie Canalway Association for a tow path feasibility study.
This resolution was assigned to the Community Development Committee, and I'm going to ask to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly. Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution 23R88.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly. Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have no second readings, no third readings, and no pending regulations, so hold your honor.
Okay, here we go. Mayor's report. Mr. Daniels, are you going to talk about the comprehensive plan?
A little bit, just we have a meeting on Monday, so that's it.
Okay, yeah. It's going to be a gather in the lakes. Seven o'clock and refreshments and celebration, I hope. You know, I sent something out to all the business owners, and we're asking the whole steering committee to try to be there. And it's exciting that it's all the hard work's coming to fruit. So that should be a good event. There'll be a PowerPoint, I'm sure, to roll that out and explain, and then we go forward from there. So I sure hope we get a good turnout. Me too. We need, we need community buy-in. Yep. I'm going to send a reminder to the businesses too, because that's such an important element. The planning and zoning public hearing on proposed amendments to Articles 4, 5, 6, 14, Article 3, the nonconformity section, that is Thursday, November 16th. That would be the day after our next meeting at 6:30. We are in the process of posting those proposed amendments, if they're not already up, they may have been up by the end of the day or it'll be up tomorrow. So everybody will get a chance to look at those and proceed to a public hearing on that. We've had a, been approached, well, we had conversations with a company who has an odd name. It's called, I don't know, I can't recall the name of the company, but the cameras are Flock cameras, and you may be familiar with Flock cameras or maybe not. They read license plates. And they can be used and are used in a variety of ways, but our purpose would be for security purposes, to place those at certain intersections, generally major areas to come in and out of New Franklin. You see it on TV if you watch some of the sophisticated shows where, you know, FBI, man, they pull it up right up, he's at the corner, you know, we got him coming through so-and-so, this intersection. That's what these are. And if we had an incident, they not only will track license plates, they'll also track car models. And so if it's a, you know, I don't know, a white Subaru 2020, they'll check those as well. And it's really, it's more an investigative tool in that sense. So we're getting some pricing on that. The chief has met with them, and we thought maybe we might want six or eight of these. We may run into, it might be as much as $30,000 a year to keep these up, but we think it'd be a good investment. We'll give you more details. The company came back, they had like 108 locations they were suggesting. So we don't think we need that many. So they're paring that down. And I know the schools are having discussions with them as well, too, to have those deentrance ways at the school buildings, which would be helpful if there's somebody who's unwanted there. So these would have, they're not only, they not only would enable us to track something after the fact, but the whole NCIC database is incorporated into this so that if a car comes, hits one of those, and that there's a warrant for that owner, we're going to get an alert on that. Or, you know, and the same thing with a variety of potential criminal issues. We'll know, we get an immediate prompt on that. So anyway, I'll keep you posted, and we'll get some more detail on that as it comes The, to wit, the charter review is coming up, 2024, and so we posted something Monday, I can't remember yesterday or the day before, on our website. I'll write about it. We are opening, accepting applications for people who might want to serve on that. We had a good group last time around, you know, I've reached, letting them know, see if they're interested in serving again. And I set what was an arbitrary deadline of Friday, December 1st. So give everybody a month to try to get some applications in here and see what we have. The charter calls for me to suggest the appointments for approval by council. So we'll try to get a representative group together, and we start in that process.
I mean, you were looking for seven.
I'm sorry, that's seven members for the charter.
Yeah. So is this an application process? They have to fill out the official 45-page application and get it notarized and stuff like that? Or is it more of a letter of interest telling why it would be a good person for it?
Yeah, well, it is a very abbreviated form. I'll take the predator of the blame. We condensed it down, you know, name and address and that information. The easy thing about education, you know, how far to go, very brief employment, and how those skills would might benefit. And then I added a section for previous board or commission service, which I think is a really important piece, the ability to have gone through that, be able to work with others, be able to disagree without being disagreeable, come to consensus and accept and that kind of thing. So that's it. That's all, very, very simple. It'll take five minutes for somebody to fill out.
The, you're looking to have the applications by December 1st, and we want to have the commission in place by January 1st. What is the timeline for the commission?
Yeah, I think January 14th is the date that it has to be on. And what I suggested, and I went from the previous, that we'd look for an organizational meeting in February, which is what we've done before. That would provide, and then by June 14th, I think is the day they have to have their recommendation to council for any proposed amendments. Council then, what we did in the past, it has to be published in a newspaper. And first of all, council would have to decide, and there'd be resolutions to, you know, to decide to put these on the ballot, these proposed changes. Then there'd be a public hearing on that, an opportunity for everybody to discuss those. And I believe the deadline is somewhere around September to actually get them on that November ballot. So by having the organizational in the middle of February, March, April, May, they give them three full months, almost four, actually four full months before they have to have a recommendation. We've been through this only a few times. It's every five years after the original. So, and, but up to this point, it has been a situation where, I think, primary council, I don't know if anybody from the, I don't know if a citizen has come in and said, hey, I might propose this change, and asked the charter commission to consider, do you think this is a good idea? Certainly from the city's perspective, there have been, you know, suggestions, we want the commission to consider this. Last time around, probably the biggest one was the Civil Service Commission, and converting that to the Personnel Advisory and Appeals Board. That was suggested. There was some house cleaning the last time around in terms of residency requirements. It was a little imbalanced in between, I can't even remember whether it was at-large or.
Or words, you didn't have to live in your ward.
Right, right. So we cleaned that. So in terms of, what they're, you know, occasionally, the field will come in and say, no, there's no changes needed. But if changes are recommended, it would be, you know, ideal to start having those discussions and throw those issues, which is what we did last time around. We let the commission know, here's what, here's the topics that are being discussed. Give them time to do some research on that as well.
Okay. So with that, if I may, you know, take over your recording.
We'll be fine.
With the council rules, some of the council rules are part of the charter. So I, I've already started looking at some of the things that we may want to think about and recommend, but for those of us that may or may not be on council next year, that will be on council next year, start looking at council rules, and I can certainly get that out to you. Council rules, and then looking at the charter and how that, you know, works within the charter. One thing off the top of my head that we need to take care of is record keeping of meetings. Technically, there are certain issues, written things that we need to do, and we should be able to move that to more up-to-date and video recordings of meetings and things like that. So there's a few little things in there, in the council rules, that I'd like you all to take a look at as we get closer to, you know, basically March of next year, and being able to just, you know, share with the commission. This is, you know, our thoughts, and again, it's totally up to them what they want to do and, you know, go forward with that, so.
Thank you. And along those lines, I mean, one other one, and I don't know if there's a whole lot others, but there's been a change. The legislature made some changes in terms of requirements for municipalities for publication of resolutions and ordinances that have passed, and currently it requires publication in a newspaper or general circulation. They've amended that now to permit that to be published on the website, and you don't have to go to the expense of publication. Our charter requires publication.
Right.
So that's one other one I've got bookmarked that will be proposed.
Yeah. So there's the primary discussion.
That's a really important discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm in full support of just getting rid of the primary hearing. You know, I think, I understand the logic behind the process, but we don't have numerous people seeking office out here, and I don't think, I think it's the logic that they need.
And I will tell you, on that note, because that primary sits there in September, as you know, we had a local option election involving one precinct, that we didn't get any advance notice, not that we could have done anything about it, but I'm not going to go into details, because we are starting some discussions with the Board of Elections relative to what the expense of that was and whether or not we ought to be responsible for it. So I won't go deeper into that. I mean, literally, this is like hot off the presses. And I traded some information with our law director, and I think he's going to be in touch with the board, and so I'll keep you posted on that as soon as I can with more details. But at that point, if we didn't have that, we don't have that problem if you don't have that primary. Yeah.
I mean, we could have at least gone and knocked on their door and said, would you mind waiting three months to do this with the next election?
None of it made sense.
And they may not have realized.
I don't know if they were relieved.
They didn't promote it.
I can't imagine they did it on purpose.
No.
Not on purpose, but you're right, maybe it really was not something that had been really concerned. And that happens a lot, because nothing was really, as you said, advertised. It was not promoted at all.
Did it fail?
That's what I, that's what worries me too. I didn't know nothing about.
I know.
Yeah, that's what you're saying, I had no idea.
Well, that's what I'm saying, sometimes things happen, and you look back and think, oh, it's just no search, nobody knew.
All right. And lastly, we did have, we had an inquiry from the New Franklin Church, formerly United Methodist Church, our neighbors over here, good neighbors that they are, asked whether or not the city could be involved in plowing snow during winter. We have an arrangement with them where they allow us to use the driveway, actually, people end up using both driveways, but the driveway to the east, at the east end of their parking lot, and in return for that, we paved that area. This time around, again, we striped it, et cetera, so. Um, so I think it's something that, that's worth discussing. Uh, and, uh, so I've had, uh, I've reached out, uh, today, this afternoon, uh, and asked them for an opportunity to meet with, uh, their board or whomever to have some discussions about, um, you know, you know, what we might be able to put together, um, some type of memorandum of understanding, probably something to that effect. I, I don't think it's a situation where it would have to go to the extent of a resolution, but we may want to have some. At a minimum, I think we'd want to have some kind of written agreement. And I'm actually going to look and see if we even got a written agreement for what we're doing right now. Uh, I don't know, because we've been doing it an awful long time. So, but, uh, so they're good neighbors and I'll keep counsel abreast, uh, of what, what happens in that regard. And that's all I got.
Well, thank you for allowing me to put in on the news. That was very thoughtful.
More than ever.
And Jack, do you have anything to respond to or something to plan?
Uh, it's what's been said, uh, you know, we're, we have, uh, culminated to the end. Here we are. Um, I hope the community, just like we urged and advertised and pushed for people to get involved in the survey and come to the, to the work sessions and, and, uh, and make your voice be heard. I think as the comprehensive plan is delivered to the community, how it's received by the community needs that buy-in. Um, it's, it's, it's a very comprehensive, comprehensive plan. That means it, it involves a lot of things, a lot of different ideas. It is not a roadmap. It's not, it's not a, it's not a plan to say, this is all of the stuff we're going to do. It is a broad stroke of ideas. If, if, if the city were to go in this direction in this topic, this is how the community feels about that topic. If they don't decide not to do that, do that. I mean, if we did everything that was in the comprehensive plan, I think it, it would cost like twelve years of our budget all at once. That's obviously not going to happen, so, um, there's, there's, there's a lot there and I think this, you know, one thing that came out of the survey was that this community loves this community. Um, the, the overwhelming majority were happy with, with this, with New Franklin. Um, so I think that means they'd like to have buy-in, um, involvement, so. Uh, please urge people, uh, if you're here, if you're watching online, uh, urge people to come to gather at the lakes Monday nights.
Yeah. It's going to be a fun event.
Yeah, yeah, seven o'clock. You can stop there at, uh, at, uh, La La's and have dinner if people, hold on, we might not be able to do this.
I don't, I don't agree with that. But we're going to have, we're going to have refreshments and...
Right, they don't have to say for the whole thing, they can pop in if they have a short amount of time. And I think that's something good too. There's a lot of people who'd be going home, they want to just pop in and see what's going on, especially if you have the...
We're going to have paper copies of the plans on all the tables.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's a good idea, Paul.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
And I think, if I may?
Yeah.
Um, we started this process, uh, a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, when we, uh, put together a committee to, to select people to be on, on the, uh, steering committee. And so it, it, it hasn't been just something that's been done, you know, overnight and whoop, there it is. There could, it's been a long process. We, we start out with twenty-some members on the, uh, steering committee and just like with any committee, it whittles down a bit. Uh, some people came to, all of them, some people came here and there, et cetera. But the input that they provided was important. Uh, you know, even if they only show up for one or two meetings, uh, they provided input that, that was important. And, uh, and we had a lot of, uh, residents that put a lot of work into it, a lot of time into it. So I, I just, I, I want to praise them and thank them for the work that they put into it because it was a lot of work and, uh, um, yeah, I just don't want people to think it was just a, a quick little thing. It was almost a year process to, to make this happen and at a cost of two and a half million dollars.
I think it was pretty about the time they took.
I do want to assure them that it wasn't...
Close to.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah. If you're going to want me, somebody just shut it off right there. Sort of making phone calls.
Oh, really?
You will be on the news tomorrow.
Right. Um, and, uh, I, oh, to reiterate what, what Jim said, there was a lot of input and, and, uh, there was not a, uh, I don't... Nobody in that room was shoving ideas down anybody else's throat. It was really about pulling, pulling information, the mayor stayed out of it. Um, you know, it was, it was the commission that had control. Barry Shaker, I'm pretty sure you came to every single meeting. Would you, uh, would you want to elaborate on any, anything that happened?
Like you said, it was a lot of good conversation, a lot of good people there. That's all, thanks, overall, went well.
It did, it did. I, I'm, I'm proud of all of it, I really am. And, and, uh, I think every other city should be, so. All right, I'll stop there.
And they can pick up your own copy Monday evening at seven P M.
And it'll be online as well.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Jim. Susan, I don't know how you keep following them, but...
Well, actually...
Walking month is always a good point.
Actually, you're lucky, I don't really have too much, we're, we're gearing, starting to gear down for the end of the year and beginning in New Year, so we're kind of, you know, we're getting ready to, to decide when our cutoffs are going to be for purchases and all those kinds of things. So when we see those months come up on the calendar, we, we see them with dread. But that's, that's kind of where we're going, we're just gearing up for the end of the year, so.
And Susan, you only have just a couple months. Does that seem possible?
Crazy, isn't it?
I, I know. It's just like, it flies, it flies. And, you know, and people, people don't realize that, you know, sometimes that we're on, our fiscal year is the calendar year. So that means the holidays for us aren't a choice. They could be, but, um, because, for example, the schools, they're sort of, you know, they go from June to, you know, June to July, so. Um, yeah, it makes it a little more difficult, but, but we, we get through it. We get our lists out and we mark off everything and make sure we dot all our i's and cross every d.
Thank you, Susan. Do we have anything for old business, Sean?
Yes, for old business, since we brought two and a half million out of the year. What, what was the cost of, I mean, does anybody know what the cost of it was?
About eighty-five?
Yeah, right around there.
Right, right.
Eighty-five thousand, two and a half months.
Pretty, pretty much the same nowadays.
Around eighty-five thousand.
Any new business?
I would like to, uh, talk just a little bit about this lock system. Um, so I have, I had a brief conversation with Chief Bickett about it. I, I think it's a neat concept, you know, with the, with the car theft issue that we had here a couple weeks ago. Something like that, you, you've got the license plate because it's, it's a stolen. Well, no, the car didn't get stolen in that case.
Right.
Right, yeah. Um, but if you, if you had a stolen car, I mean, that, that, that's a great example. Your car gets stolen, you find out rather quickly. This is a, this is a way that your license plate's on it, it, it could theoretically be tracked down.
Right.
That could be a, a real benefit to the public. I have some concern though, you know, um, I mean, a police officer could look up somebody's record, can do all that kind of stuff. I, I would think there are some safety controls around an officer being able to say, uh, hey, you know, a guy down the road, he thinks his girl's cheating on him, you know, let's, let's look her license plate up. I, I, I would think there are some preventative measures to somebody having access to, to that system.
There's some really, really strict...
Okay.
Laws in that regard.
Okay, so there's that, there's, there's equal protection.
Yeah. And, and, I mean, officers have been prosecuted.
Okay.
Uh, and, and lost jobs for that very thing.
But you see in a domestic violence situation or, or abuse, it could be a tool that could have a very bad outcome if it were used.
No, that's, uh, yeah, it's a Big Brother type of thing, but, uh, there's, there's really, really strict laws in that regard of, uh, even access to that, to that database.
Okay.
Um, uh, it's, it's, it's very limited and, and there's also a, a history of who, who tracks as well.
Good.
And, and inquiries that are made and asked reviewed on a regular basis.
Um, yeah, and, and an example, another example besides a stolen car, um, I believe, uh, the Akron incident with Mr. Walker. Um, they, Akron has locks, right?
Right.
And they, I'm pretty sure, we got confirmation, they had picked that up and known that he had run from us.
Right.
So they had, when, when they went into that, when it ended up being a horrific, bad situation, they had a lot of information walking into it that, that currently we wouldn't have.
Right.
Could be very, very annoying. So I, I'm, I'm being supportive as long as there's some real protection.
Right.[1681.41]